So we will call this special council meeting to order Friday, July 10, 11 a.m. And we will start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Okay, that moves us to Agenda Item 1. So there have been some changes, it's public comment. There have been some changes to public comment. We have reinstated public comment in the council chambers, but we will also accept public comment via the phone. To help our tech team manage the time lapses, we will rotate between the online and in-person speakers. So public comment will be accepted for public comment communications, discussion calendar, and public hearings. So for those wishing to comment, they may do so for each agenda item, and the time is limited to three minutes per item. To call in to a specific item via the phone, please dial 951-826-8600 when the agenda item is called to be placed in the queue. Please follow along with the meeting via engage riverside.com or Riverside TV cable channels to ensure you call in at the appropriate time for your item. Once we answer your call, please be sure to turn off the video or TV as there will be a delay. So with that being said, we will go to public comment, Agenda Item 1. Again, the number is 951-826-8600. I'll look at the chat to see if we have any public comment in the chambers. Nothing in the chamber, no callers on the line either. So that will move us quickly along to Agenda Item Number 2, COVID-19 Metrics and City Responses Given to Us by Mark Anis. We're hearing from some on the team meeting that they don't have audio, it looks like. Maybe having some technical difficulties. We will wait and get some direction from our IT folks. All right, are we back? Looks like we have audio. So now, maybe for those that are hearing, we're at Agenda Item Number 2, going over the COVID-19 metrics and city response by Mark Anis.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, and Council. Mark Anis, your Emergency Services Administrator. I have a short update on the metrics associated with COVID-19. Based upon the data that I'm going to present today, the Emergency Operations Center is transitioning to a Level 2 activation. The current numbers for the state, county, and the city are all above the national reported COVID-19 case increases. Now, let me go to the next slide. Thank you. Riverside County and the city have experienced several days of record case numbers. Just in the past two days, Riverside County has moved up 856 cases and 1,377 cases. And the city has had day-over-day increases of 119 and 183 cases respectively. As you can see on this slide showing that the national and California cases, California is reporting daily increases above the national reported increases, and here in the local region, we are reporting much higher. And that goes true for the entire month of July. So for perspective, the city of Riverside total cases right now is 3,224. For the perspective, the city of Riverside's case counts would be, we have more cases than 39 other California counties. We also have more cases than five states, Alaska, Montana, Vermont, Hawaii, and Wyoming. We have a larger number of cases with our 3,224. And probably by the end of the week, we'll have more cases than six states. Next slide. So we talked about our severity level index as part of our second wave, future wave COVID-19 influenza pandemic preparedness plan, or Preparedness Plan for Short, on our Tuesday council meeting. So I wanted to go over a few of the metrics from that. The first is the new cases per 100,000 in population. That is the metric to the left. So per 100,000 in population, we're seeing a rate here in Riverside County of 368.5, which is an 11.6 point increase from the prior day. So based on that index, that metric, it shows this to be a moderate level severity. Now, if we look at the metric to the right, which is our test positivity for Riverside County, we have a 12.2% positivity rate in the last 14 days. And our most recent daily percentages, so day-over-day, have been hovering right around between 15.5% to 16%. The positivity rate would put us in a low severe based on this index. Next slide. Next, we have our ICU license bed availability. In our three-city hospitals, the combined number of cases would put us at 109% of the licensed bed availability. And roughly 26% to 33% of the ICU cases in our local hospitals have been COVID-19 related. With our three-day average being 109% of licensed availability, this metric would show us in severe. The countywide hospital utilization is up from 67.6% 14 days ago to 75.7% yesterday. And the overall licensed ICU availability has been in the mid to upper 90%. Again, the county treats the entirety of the health, the hospital system as one system. They do have the ability to move back and forth, but just in our region, we're seeing a much higher percentage or over than the county has seen as a whole. The past three days, our ICUs, the county as a whole, has climbed from 93.2% to 95.3%. And COVID-19 confirmed patients are 14.4% of those that are hospitalized in the county. Overall, based on the metrics, we fall between a moderate and severe in our severity level index for where we currently are at this moment. Next slide. During the first nine days of July, we've had an average of a 4% increase of daily reported cases. The county believes case numbers will continue to jump into August. Here at the city, we've modeled what a 3% increase for the entire month of July would look like just to be conservative. And based off that model, we could see an increase of 3,250 cases by the end of the month. This would bring our total number of cases to 5,820. The county's public modeling shows a 6,475 case increase just in the next 10 days. Their modeling has usually been more conservative than the actual case counts that get reported. And I just wanted to point out that in the first nine days of July, we've had 687 cases reported here in the city. And the entire month of June, which had been our largest month, we had 1,184. Next slide. Out of the 10 largest counties, Riverside County has seen the highest cases per 100,000 at 368.5, and the third-largest number of cases in the last 14 days. And for perspective, the city of Riverside has had 1,051 cases in the last 14 days, and is seeing a 318.4 cases per 100,000 in population. In order to minimize the impacts to government services, taking steps to mitigate additional impacts is going to be key. We've seen at both the state level, where they've had to close the Capitol, and at the county level, where they've had to close their facilities to the public, that this is a serious concern of government. Next slide. What we need to do now is to limit the spread and to help provide additional capacity in our healthcare system. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the basics: mask up, wearing a face covering. It's easy, it works, it's required, and more and more studies are coming out on how vital this one step is. We've got to avoid social gatherings outside of the immediate households. These large groupings, where people are together for a prolonged period and likely at some point not wearing masks, only exacerbate the spread of COVID-19. We need people to be diligent about physical distancing. This goes together with wearing a face covering. And finally, regular hand washing. It's been keeping the germs away since they invented soap. An at-capacity ICU impacts all of us, our residents, businesses, employees within our city. We must stay alert and follow these simple, yet effective measures at work, at home, and in our everyday lives. That concludes my portion of this presentation.
All right, I see other slides. Is there others that will add to the presentation, or is that the entire presentation?
There are other slides. Mayor Pro Tem, if I could please have this slide deck back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to service level expectations. The things needed, of course, to flatten the curve and slow the spread. We are basing all of our actions on database decision-making, a lot of the data coming out of the state and the county, and then the data collection and analysis that's being done by the EOC. Education and communication, of course, is key, not only within our workforce, but to the public. And then, meeting format changes with regard to council, commission, and boards. The recommendation is that they be at a Tier 3, with using MS Teams for virtual meetings, with e-comment and telephone calls for items on the agenda. This includes live streaming of the meetings as well. I may have the next slide. Going over our COVID-19 staffing impacts, to date, July, since the beginning of the pandemic in March, we have 20 confirmed city employees that have contracted the COVID-19 virus. As a result of contact tracing, upwards of 200 employees have been tested for the virus. The identification of staff through contact tracing is very important. It requires interviewing of the employees, I'm sorry, and follow-up with positive individuals. Through contact tracing communications, we are able to sanitize facilities and equipment with the support of General Services, and our Fire Department has met the division. The direct impacts to services are wide-ranging. As you'll note here, we are now formatting implementation and alignment with the county's quarantine requirements. Previously, the city was following guidance from the CDC with regard to quarantine. However, the county has provided clarification that all individuals who've been exposed to COVID-19 positive cases are required to undergo a 14-day mandatory quarantine. The only exceptions to the mandatory quarantine are for first responders, health and human services workers. The impact of a mandatory quarantine to city staff would be crippling if we have additional cases that occur within our utilities, public works, refuges departments, because they provide poor critical services to the public. There is no exception under the county's orders for critical infrastructure workers. Our police and fire are, of course, exempt as first responders. May I have the next slide, please? As part of the item number four, the Resilient Workplace, telecommuting will be part of our new normal. In brief, the telecommuting is going to be an ongoing need. The Human Resources Department is providing guidance for telecommuters on what type of work is appropriate for telecommuting. Our data shows that we have been doing well so far. Since the beginning of the pandemic, a portion of city staff have been working remotely and being successful. We've overcome some challenging times in the beginning, but we're developing a very successful rhythm that ensures efficacy, accountability, consistency, responsibility, equity, sustainability, suitability of work, and telecommuting to provide city services. Since the start of the pandemic, 386 of our city staff have been approved to work remotely, either full or part-time. What is underway is that the Human Resources Department in support with the IT department is piloting a new timekeeping and accountability module that will allow for transparency and accountability for hourly employees. The telecommuting policy is undergoing revision, which will reflect how telecommuting will play into our new normal as we continue through the pandemic. In addition, and lastly for my part, we are providing systems to support supervision for supervisors who have remote staff. We are providing for guidance and policies that will ensure that they can effectively supervise hourly employees. With that, I will transition to the next presenter for the next slide.
Thanks, Stephanie, and thanks, Mark. Al Zelenko, City Manager, council members, and Mayor Pro Tem. The implications of the information that Mark presented is, there are many. However, we, as a city, under your leadership, have taken a very data-driven, thoughtful approach all along as we have been managing this pandemic. And what we are, what we have arrived at is the need to make a few adjustments to our facilities. One is that we will be closing for in-person services until the numbers start to go in favorable directions, and we have confidence in the well-being of the public and the well-being of city staff. Closing for in-person services, the One Stop Shop, we will also be converting the Riverside Public Utility Downtown Customer Service Center and Casablanca Customer Service Center from an in-person to a 311 customer, I mean, to a payment drop box and an online payment system, and mail-in system, of course. And then, we are also working with our Riverside Police Department to, for the time being, for closing the lobbies as well. None of this is, are steps that we're happy about doing, but they're steps that we feel are necessary, both for minimizing the congregations of people and spaces for both the benefit of the public health, as well as the well-being of the health of employees. On the One Stop Shop side, we are anticipating a maximum of 25% reduction of volume. We have, in the last intervening weeks since we've opened the One Stop Shop, we've increased our online plan check services. And in August, we'll be increasing other online services as well. So we're hoping to reduce the volume impacts, but it's a necessary step at this time. Next slide, please. The other thing I should say is that the city clerk's passport services will be closed as well, so there won't be passport services. All of this information is on the city website, riversideca.gov backslash forward slash COVID-19. Next slide, please. Maybe you already did that. Oops, go back one slide, I'm sorry. The other is, beginning today with your, at the conclusion of the city council meeting, we will, we have the communications ready to go for press release, social media release, communications to the employees about these few small modifications, as well as signage for all city facilities. We, these will, these closers will take effect on Monday, July 13. And that's consistent with what was announced earlier this week, that the county will be closing their in-person services and having a shift to the virtual service environment. Likewise, we always welcome any ideas and thoughts you have communicating more effectively, but we have spent a lot of time in the last 48 hours preparing for the communications. Next slide, please. Part of the communications include the suite of business signage that you asked us to prepare so that businesses can display those, and about masking up, and the requirements to do so. Those PDFs are available for download at riversideca.gov forward slash COVID-19. And if I'm not mistaken, it's under the Business Resources link. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we will begin to move at the next available regularly scheduled council, commission, committee, board meetings into the virtual, the virtual space where we will have online e-comment and telephone comments with the public. The meetings will continue to be live streams. Staff, council members can engage via and participate via the Microsoft Teams platform that we've been operating under. It's increasingly important that we minimize the congregation of people, as Mark Anis so noted at this time because of the alarming increase of COVID cases. The one thing I just want to stress, though, as a city team, we're not taking an alarmist approach to this because with your support as our leaders and with the incredible work that our city team has done, we've been very methodical, we've been very responsible, and we have been maintaining an appropriate level of services all along that are supportive of social distancing. And so the small tweaks that we're making, we are confident will pay good dividends for the betterment of public health. And with that, I think this is the last slide of my presentation. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark and Stephanie, and Al, and all the city staff that are adapting and adjusting to keep things running as seamlessly as possible in these, in this difficult space that we're in. Are there any clarifying questions from the council? I see a couple requests to speak. Are those clarifying or for after-public comment? Okay, Councilmember Rolandrez, did you have a clarifying or afterward?
It is a clarifying question. I just wanted to, from Mark Anis, thank you, all of you, thank you so much for the report on this. And I asked this question at the last council meeting as well. When, obviously, when you have so many individuals with COVID-19 in the hospital, it puts our medical personnel at risk. You have individuals that possibly, although in some cases, some of the nurses don't feel that they're adequately protected, but those that do not have, Mark, COVID-19 and need other types of emergency services, we talked about auto accidents, we talked about some of the others, they're still not affected by this. In fact, the amount of resources now that the hospitals turn to put into this COVID-19 and working with their patients and expanding ICUs, if somebody needs additional surgery for, you know, other body parts, they're still not being affected? Is that what I'm understanding?
So, council member, so it, as at this point, no, they're not being affected. It's a concern, though, because when you are operating in surge, surge capacity, it's not where you necessarily want to be. You want to be operating under where your licensed bed availability is, because that's where your typical staffing is associated with it. Every time you add a regular hospital bed to make it a surge ICU bed, you're having to add additional, additional staff and so forth. So at this point, it's a, it's a concern. It's not necessarily, no one's being turned away. And again, that the county operates whereby there's a system that they can divert an ambulance to another hospital if one hospital's ICU is beyond capacity and can't meet the needs. And I just wanted to also make a note that if people, and I said this at the last council, if people are sick, they have something, they, you know, break their arm, whatever it may be, go to the hospital. They're checking people at the door and putting people that have COVID symptoms in one area, non-COVID symptoms go into a different spot, but they are checking at the door, the symptoms, and so forth. If you're sick, if you're ill, if you're having any sort of cardiovascular issue, don't take a chance, go to the hospital, and there'll be, there'll be places for you.
In terms of utilizing the Sears location, are we at that point yet? In, in terms of utilizing the Sears location, are we at that point yet? I, I know that was set aside for situations like this, has this been, where are they with that?
So, right now, what the county is, is actually planning to use that for is a situation where, because the, right now, the hospital utilization of regular hospital beds, which is what that can kind of cover as a basic field medical station, that's not necessarily where the problem is, it's in those high-acuity, the ICU beds. So, one of the things, we can't just consider that the only disaster we're going to have this year is a pandemic. And so, they are planning to use the Sears FMS site as a location if there is a wildfire or a public safety power shut-off that involves evacuations. Those that are evacu, that are evacuating, that have been at home with COVID-19 or present with COVID-19 symptoms at a, an evacuation center or shelter before they get into an evacuation center or shelter, they'll be diverted, asked to go to the Sears location. That is the current, current plan, because again, you know, there's going to be other things that happen this year. This weekend is, is, is going to be hot, so that's what they're planning to use that for right now, because the, of the fact that where the hospitals need assistance is in that ICU capacity and this, the federal field medical station is not necessarily set up to be, to be a ICU and was never envisioned as ICU.
Okay, thank, thank you for that.
I'll make it quick. Mark, can you, if you know, if you don't know, you don't have to do it right now, whether or not, what the average ICU capacity is pre-COVID, so what percentage are our ICU beds generally filled at when COVID-19 wasn't a problem we were dealing with?
Uh, I can, I can get that for you, but it was drastically less back in, in the March-April timeframe. It was drastically less.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing if there are no callers. So I guess we can turn it over to see comment, which I think has started, but any other comments from the council? Back to you, Councilmember Fiero. Yeah, it looks like we're getting some loop back here in our audio, but it sounds like it, it went off there.
Okay, wonderful. No, obviously, this is a special meeting, and we have one and only topic to talk about, so, you know, we, we live in a perpetual state of an uncertain future right now, a highly volatile future that makes us question every decision we made based off of the outcome. And I think that we need to remember that all we can do in moments like that is make the best decision we can with the facts in front of us. You know, a couple of months ago, I said that we didn't have the luxury of prioritizing our economy or, or health system, that we had to do both, that they worked in tandem, and I still believe that. Unfortunately, I, I think that we're getting to a point where that time has passed, where we're talking about human life and we're talking about disease spread, where you have to start having some really hard conversations. And I say this as a business owner, I say this as a business owner that may lose his business, depending on the scale and severity of this outbreak, this pandemic, how long it lasts, I don't know whether I'll weather it or not, but in moments like this, I think it requires us to start seeing our city and our fellow businesses and our fellow citizens as our family. And I want everyone to recall a time in their life where they made a decision that they didn't want to make but had to make for a reason related to their family, for health, safety, financial, and try to have empathy and patience as us as electeds, as city management, county electeds, state, federal, all try our best to make hard decisions. And when John F. Kennedy gave his inaugural speech in 1960, he said a very famous line, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country, one most certainly all of you know, but there's a quote in that speech that I think explains what he meant by that, when he said, "Now the trumpet summons, summons us again, not as a call to bear arms, the arms we need, not as a call to battle, though in battle we are, but a call to bear the burden of a long twilight struggle, year in and year out, rejoicing in hope, patience in tribulation, a struggle against the common enemies of man, tyranny, poverty, disease, and war itself." We find ourselves fighting a battle right now with one of those common enemies of man and its disease. So I would like us to have that hard discussion, as much as I don't want to, as much as I want life to go back to normal, we can't ignore the facts in front of us. So I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, but I think the time of us expecting other elected bodies, whether it's the county or the state or the federal government, to keep our city safe, although I believe they want that, we are not their sole focus. It is our sole focus. So we have to do what we need to do to keep our city safe, and if that's a hard decision that I have to make, I will make it just like I would make it for my family, and I will treat Riverside like my family. So, thank you.
Councilmember Landres.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have one question. Thank you so much for those words, Councilmember Fiero. You know, one of the things that is so important to, to, to think about at this particular time, when we look back 30 days ago, you know, the numbers in age groups from 18 to 39 were actually lower than those from 40 to 64. Though, that age group from 18 to 39 has surpassed by at least 1,000 infected cases now. So we're seeing the younger community having the virus. I personally have encountered, not encountered, but spoken with two individuals that have gone through this coronavirus, people that I personally know. They didn't know where they got it from, but they had contact somewhere, very conscientious individuals. You know, we can catch it anywhere, we have to be extremely cautious, extremely aware of, of this particular virus, and we see how rapidly it can, it can spread. You know, the, the advice and the information that was shared by our staff members today is extremely important, not only for us as city council members and mayor to, to share, but for others to do the same. This is a virus you may not die of, but you're going to feel like you're going to die. The people that I spoke to said it was horrible. You'd never know the outcome, we don't know when this is going to slow down, but please, community, take every precaution possible to stay safe. Thank, thank you for calling this emergency meeting. I think it's extremely important that we emphasize to the importance, emphasize the importance to the community about this virus and reinforce that over the weekend and continue to do that in the following weeks. But again, the numbers in our younger community is increasing and has already surpassed the age group from 40 to 64 by at least 1,000 infected cases. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. I agree with what my colleagues have said. I think these numbers are staggering. I think what staff is recommending here is a, is a good starting point, but I think at the same time, we're going to have to review this on, on a regular basis and then probably make much further adjustments. I'm agreement with closing everything down on Monday. My, my suggestion would be is we better have employees at these locations that are going, we're going to probably get some criticism, we're doing this on a Friday, and I'm not sure how many people that, that use our facilities will, will know that over the weekend. The county shut down earlier this week, and they gave a couple of days' notice, we're, we're doing it on a Friday, basically, it's going to be a Friday afternoon, and we're going to expect people to know over the weekend, so we're going to need people at locations that can answer questions and, and probably take some criticism, at the same time, just for the lack of getting some advance notice on, on the closures. Like I said, yeah, this, this is a starting point, and I think it's going to probably get much worse. I will follow and remind people of something that what Mr. Anis said, is if you're sick or ill and, and need hospital care, please do so. I will tell you from personal experience, and prior to the hospitals opening back up for surgeries, elective surgeries, unfortunately, I had an opportunity to go to the ER a couple times during that period of time, and trust me, they have safeguards in place to deal with anybody who shows up at the door, so I'll just reemphasize the point, if you need medical care, seek it out, seek it out of hospital, though they will be able to, to triage you and treat you to the best of their abilities. So with that, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you so much. I am so proud of our city and just want to thank city staff for having such a clear rubric and process in place. We really were, as so many people were, building the bridge as we walked across it in March, and it's clear that we've done a lot of learning, a lot of documenting from the first time and putting a clear process in place. I'm very grateful for that, and it will help us in the days and the weeks ahead, as, as Councilmember Fiero pointed out and others on the dais, that we will need to make and continue to make hard decisions. Just two questions. One is if we have any data on the particular hotspots in the city proper, and then the second question is if we can be reminded of what the next steps are. So we heard about what will be happening as of Monday, what in, within our process, our rubric, what are the next steps to come and decisions that the public and that the council will need to anticipate? And then, to fellow council members, are there steps we haven't considered that are on your minds that you would like us to be thinking about now?
Mark, do you want to start off on the data piece?
Yes. Having some technical difficulties with my computer, I apologize, it's starting to freeze up. So as, as far as the data piece goes, we do get data on these codes. I think we presented on that not last week, but the week before, and I don't have that in front of me right now, but if memory serves me correct, it was, four was the zone that had the most cases, if I, if I remember correctly, but we do get that. I, I, it's not necessarily the hotspots, it's just the number of, the, the total number of cases. We'll, we're going to get the number of new cases per, per zip code, and that might actually assist in, in that effort. We're actually meeting with, with the county's head of modeling and algae this afternoon to discuss additional data that we would like to see in house and, and some of our metrics, so we'll bring that up with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, former Mayor Protem, Councilmember Edwards. In terms of next steps, as Mark said, we have elevated the Emergency Operations Center to a Level 2, which means that we are going to be communicating a lot more and reviewing a lot more data in a timely manner as it relates to city operations. So, one component of that is we have a number of facilities that are still open and serving the public with some in-person components. Parks and Rec, for instance, the parks and the parking lots are open, tennis centers open, cooling centers are open, Fairmont Golf Course is open, that's an example. As you'll recall from earlier in the pandemic, the governor made decisions about closing those types of facilities. So we will be monitoring both locally, regionally, statewide, for any indicators that, whether it's an order or other indicators that would cause us to want to or need to close facilities. But we have done such a, a good job, I believe, again, under the leadership of this council, in properly governing the openness of our facilities so that we don't have to swing from one extreme to another. We have chosen a moderation and a, a very measured approach all along. The other dimension to this is that there is an enforcement dimension. We spent a great deal of time over last weekend, in early part of this week, working with the county, the state, and, and our, our local government to figure out this web of enforcement. And what we, it, it's not an easy web, and it's a little complex, but it is a, it is a web that we now understand and really appreciate the good work of, of our city attorney's office and, and helping with that, as well as Mark Anis and his team, and that's very beneficial. But one of the points that I, that we're having conversations about right now is many of the codes that are being employed to enforce, and I, and I'm using the term enforcement, kind of, I, I should state first that all agencies, ours included, we don't want to use code violations and heavy-duty letters from city attorney or county council, we want education and information to be the, the foremost tool to help all of us help public health. In those instances where enforcement is needed because of exhausting information education, we have this enforcement matrix that we put together to understand the roles of the different levels of government. One of the components that we're having a conversation about is there's an absence of the lighter administrative citation component to enforcement, and so we're talking about that because it's much less heavy-handed than criminal codes and the like that, that are in the construct that we currently understand to be the, the case. So we're working through that as a, as a next step of consideration because we, we, as Councilmember Fiero so well said, we, we look upon our community as part of the larger family, and we want to sparingly use enforcement and have that enforcement be as light-handed as possible when we have to use it. So hopefully that captures the next steps, and, and I will say as an aside, we heard the council loud and clear the other night about the policy group, and so one of the reasons why we stood up this emergency meeting is because we know that this topic is so important to each and every one of you as our elected leaders and to the public at large. So having this open conversation is a direct result of you, the council, communicating the need for transparency, and thus, we are here before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Edwards, did, I apologize, did you have more?
No, nothing more for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Placencia.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I was having issues with, with technology today.
We can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So my question is, and I apologize if I missed this, I did review the documents that were sent in, but my question is to Stephanie, I saw the graphic about what's open, what's closed, and is there, was there any data that I missed or a list of which employees it would impact? would impact and how many employees would go back to either telecommuting or be furloughed?
There's no change to staffing directions to report to work. All staff that are currently working are, are being directed to work as normal.
Okay, so Monday when we close certain services, then it won't impact our employees?
No, not with the closures, no.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody having this conversation and, and I know many departments worked for the past, you know, two, two days trying to get all this information out quickly. So I appreciate staff's work on this. Thank you.
Okay, any other conversation from council? I, I just have one, one question, Mark, and when we're looking at the 10 largest counties and we're comparing against some of the other cities, and, and I appreciate the, the data-driven information and, and decision-making here, do we have any sort of understanding of what our, our testing is compared to others and, and why we might seem like we're having a little bit of, as Councilmember Edwards said earlier, the hotspots, where are those at? Do we know anything about how others are doing? And I guess the reason I'm asking is because it would be concerning if they're not doing enough and it could be more severe. And I just want to know how we, do we know how we're comparing to other spaces around us as far as testing and, and tracing and things?
Yes, Mayor Protem Hemingway. We, I don't have the exact percentages or, or numbers compared to the other counties surrounding us, but we have been in the past doing, in that percentage, we've been doing a better job at, at testing countywide. And they, they publish their, their numbers each day in terms of the number of tests. But again, the number of tests doesn't necessarily change the fact of the positivity rate. So the, so it's the positivity, also that's concerning, that 2.2% positivity rate and that we're doing a little worse than, than, than our neighbors. And we've been increasing again between 15.5% to 16% the past few days of, of when they reported. And there's actually a lag in those daily reports that come in, but the last one was 15.5%. So that 12.2% four-day trend positivity rate will likely continue to jump upward over the few days because of the 5 to 6 that we've had in previous few.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And maybe it's, we can have some friendly, encouraging conversation with, with those around to make sure that we're all taking this serious enough to do as much preventative work and testing as we can. Any other comments? What, what is needed of us, if I may ask? Oh, Councilwoman Placencia.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment about some emails we've been getting about today's meeting and about wearing masks. I, I think that the city has done a great job and we will continue to work towards educating the community, but I just wanted to publicly say that our position is that it is mandatory that we wear face masks in, in our offices, in, in our departments, but as well as when you're out in public. And so we're not, today's meeting is not to debate whether we're wearing masks or not or we're encouraging people. Without a doubt, we wear masks, we are mandating that masks are worn in public and I received a few emails. I just wanted to publicly state that again, that it's mandated for everyone to be wearing masks in public and I know we do that within our departments for those who still come into work. So thank you.
Thank you. And so what is, what is needed of the council here at this point? Do we, maybe you all can, what is staff looking for here? Maybe, maybe I missed it. I, I don't know as I see it though.
This, these two items were just communication. Now we'll go on to item number four, which we'll need the council's direction on.
Oh, so this was both two and three? Oh, okay, great.
Correction.
We'll, we'll move on to item number four and just for those watching, for call-in to comment on the, in any item, it's 951-826-8600 and you'll be placed in the queue. So yeah, we'll hear item number four. Looks like Raphael Guzman and Stephanie will be, Holloman will be giving that to us.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem and Council. Stephanie Holloman, Human Resources Director. I will be discussing the Resilient Workplace Order of the Director of Emergency Services. The order rescinds the current minimum staffing order and orders establishment of a resilient workplace by, by means of telecommuting, use of rotational scheduling and any other means to maintain services to the public while at the same time protecting both the public and city staff from the spread of COVID-19. It goes without saying that since the start of the pandemic, the city has placed the highest priority on the health, safety and welfare of our employees and the public. The city quickly moved to comply with all state orders and guidance from the Public Health Office, CDC and OSHA. Combined with data from the Emergency Operations Center, the city took steps to modify delivery models for continuity of operations. This continuity, continuity of operations plan was expected to be a short-term response to quickly level the curve of the spread of COVID-19. However, as we've come to realize, the duration and course of this pandemic is exceeding our expectations. It's important that the city now consider a sustainable service model for core city services that will carry the city through the remainder of this pandemic. The city, the city must model, have a model that is sustainable, adaptable, flexible and equitable for all city staff. It must comply with all state, county and local orders in order to help slow down the spread of COVID-19. This model must minimize the stress and anxiety to staff. And lastly, this model must ensure the continued delivery of excellent customer service to the public we serve, meeting the mission of the city Riverside. The rescission of the minimum staffing order and shift to a resilient workplace model will ensure just that. This acknowledges that we will be in a new normal for the foreseeable future. The resilient workplace model uses, uses current workforce status as a starting point by building sustainability, accountability and effectiveness into new service models. First, the resilient workplace model will see the return of furloughed staff unless their core services are not in alignment with state's orders under the resilience roadmap. Second, all departments will comply with their safe return to work plans, which includes provision of necessary PPE, adherence to face covering requirements and social distancing whenever possible. Third, all departments will evaluate the use of technology to support new service models, including but not limited to virtual services, online service portals, telecommuting and moving from paper to paperless processing whenever possible and other innovative ways of delivering city services. I'd like to take a moment to go deeper on how telecommuting and virtual services will play a very important role in our new normal. Recognizing that public trust is paramount and that accountability and transparency will be important in our new model, I think it's important to discuss telecommuting and remote working. Since the start of the minimum staffing order, some city staff have been working remotely for continuity of operations and to comply with the stay-at-home order. Though it's been challenging in the beginning, protocols were put in place for the review and approval for requests to telecommute. Based on the type of functions performed by city staff, only 25% of city staff are eligible to work remotely. The balance of staff, which is approximately 1,600 full-time and part-time benefited employees, have duties that are not conducive to telecommuting. As noted earlier, a pilot is now underway to test a feature in Microsoft Teams that will provide accountability and transparency of work when employees are working remotely. With the support of the, the IT department, system access is through a secure channel to protect the integrity of the city's systems. In closing, these times are unprecedented. All city leadership is keenly, keenly focused on how we are responding to this challenge, but the lesson is that this is a fluid situation that changes not only daily, but sometimes hourly. Together, we are confident that we will emerge and respond successfully to this pandemic. This concludes my presentation. The city team is open for any questions in your consideration of the ratification of the Director of Emergency Services' Resilient Workplace Order. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from the council? Not seeing any, any public comment on the phones or in the chambers. I don't see any in the chambers. Any calls on the phone? No callers, so we'll turn this back over to the council for discussion. I'll just look around since I don't see any getting typed in for comments or questions. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a question, it sounds like, well, first a comment, it sounds like this is a prudent move that is responsive to the times we're in and the times ahead. From the standpoint of an employee, what will this switch look like?
For staff that are currently working, there should be no immediate change to their working assignments. What the resilient workplace model will allow for is a more long-term vision of how we are providing city services. As mentioned, a lot of the, our service models have already been changed as we're seeing a lot more virtual and self-service functions. So there's no immediate effect on staff, but what this will allow is for us to continue in this way of delivering services and improve it in order to allow for sustainability during the pandemic. As I mentioned, we don't know how long this will last. I believe it's prudent and responsible for all department heads to accept that this may be longer than they anticipated and provide for staffing models that allow for that. So to your question, there's no immediate impact to city staff.
Thank you.
Okay. I see some looking at, Councilwoman Perry, were you going to type in? Not yet. Okay. Well, I don't, I don't see any other comments here. I guess just one quick question I would have. So this, this, it sounds like there's not a, a big change, but the boiled down version, it just, it gives more flexibility to adapt and adjust. Is that what I'm hearing, Stephanie? As workflows and, and work demands change in the, in the COVID pandemic reality, this allows us a little bit more flexibility to make sure that we continue providing service but, but have the ability to staff appropriately where needed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under the minimum staffing order, sorry, there was an echo. Under the minimum staffing order, as many staff as possible were placed out, told to remain home to comply with the safe home order. However, as we've seen, many staff have already returned. So this allows for a more sustainable model of staffing.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. And kind of follow-up on the same with, with our employees. So again, if I'm understanding this correctly, nothing changes from the employee's standpoint? They will come to work as normal on Monday? Or whatever there is, whether they're showing up at work or telecommuting, whatever they're doing today, Monday will, will remain the same?
That is correct, Councilmember.
And has, I'm, I'm sure probably just having this discussion will probably cause some anxiety with our employees. Has there, is there going to be some type of communication with them as well between now and Monday?
The change to city staff is just the closure of any operations that were public-facing. However, there's sufficient workload for these employees to work behind the scenes. So there's no change to them other than the fact that they're not going to be providing in-person services to the public.
And we will be communicating with the employees today.
That's, I, that's the direction I was going. I have another concern, but I don't think I'm going to address that on the dais. I'll save that until afterwards. Or I don't see, there's no others, no others, council members that want to speak, I'll move to approve.
Okay, Councilmember Perry moved and Councilmember Conder seconded, seconded that. So any other discussion before we vote? Not seeing any. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four.
Yes.
Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Yes.
Ward seven, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, well, I think that is it for our meeting, my first meeting. I saw all the happy birthday comments in the, in the chat and none of you all could see that, but I thank you all. Can't think of a better way to spend my birthday than doing this right here. So it's good stuff. So thanks so much and we'll adjourn the meeting.